All right, it's 2:00 PM. We'll get started off the record. Welcome, everyone. This is Oh, it's 2:00 PM. We'll get started off the record. Welcome, everyone. This is
I think this guy's probably doing the I think this guy's probably doing the So I think this guy's probably doing the So He's not doing the So He's not doing the Okay. He's not doing
Okay. So just let me know. Can you guys hear me in the back? Okay, we just have to speak up a little bit. Uh, and they hear me on Zoom. All right. So only one of me, I hope. All right. So off the record, we are here for the sixty-six eighty WR one twenty-five. The uh, application for Wisconsin Power Light Company. Uh, its application for authority to adjust electric and natural gas rates. My name is Michael Newmark, administrative law judge for the PSC. And without tech support, we're going to hold the public hearing for this case. Uh, where we are inviting the public to make comments on the application. Um, what we, what we do is in this case, in these types of cases, uh, the applicant will file an application for rate review. Uh, commission staff will vet that application. We'll invite interveners to join us. And also give, get, give their perspective and expert, uh, technical expertise on the proposal. Um, but we also take public comments for people who, uh, live in the service territory, or really anybody who wants to let us know their opinion about the application. Um, so today we're doing the public comments, uh, live and on location. Um, we're going to meet here at two PM and also again at six PM, at which time we'll take new comments from new people. Uh, we're also doing what we call the party hearing session, which is on Thursday, September eighteenth. And at ten, ten AM, it's going to be on Zoom only. And that's where we take evidence from the applicant, commission staff and member and um interveners. So, um, we take the record, we provide it to the commissioners, uh, the three commissioners who run the agency, make the decision on the application. They'll be in this room voting in open meeting on all the issues in the case. And they use the record that I provide them in order to make the basis for their decision. So, um, just a second. Do you have a good issue or?
No, you can hear
The audio is still moving and there's still an echo.
Yeah, okay. Um,
I thought it was somebody's computer.
You can hear that? Okay.
It is like the speaker system.
I kept looking to see if you were like kind of just treading out there or waving.
That's you. All right. Thanks for chiming in there. Okay. Um, okay. So, uh, once we get the, uh, so I provide the record to the commissioners and they make the decision. So part of that record is your comment. Um, we're also live streaming the hearing and, uh, there'll be a recording on the, on our YouTube channel for hearings. Uh, that's kind of an unofficial record of the case of the hearing, but we're also with the, what we'll officially provide the commissioners is the transcript of the hearing. We have a court reporter here who is, uh, recording what we say. Uh, at least when the comments come on, we'll get on the record and we'll have a court reporter, um, record your comments. And those will be provided to the commission. Uh, we have we also taking, uh, comments in writing. We have thirty-two, I believe, written comments so far. We've been collecting those since August eighth, when we send out our notice of hearing. And the way to comment, uh, in writing is, well, one thing, one way you can do it is if you're here in the hearing room, you can just fill out the form and write your comment on the back. We'll give you more pages if you need it. Um, but if you'd like to submit a comment online, we have a way to do that, or you can mail your comment to us. Uh, the deadline for comments, uh, we have on our notice, it says September eleventh. But we've extended that deadline to September eighteenth. So the comment link, uh, on our website will be open until September eighteenth. And any comments we receive by mail, uh, up until September eighteenth, I can accept for the record. So that's a little bit of a change to our notice, but we did have an agreement with the parties to extend that time period. So I'm going to, um, uh, respect, respect that agreement and put it into effect. So, um, some basic guidelines about giving a comment. Uh, it's pretty simple. Uh, if you're in the hearing room, you just want to fill out an appearance slip, put your name on the top and then check the box, uh, yes. You said the box that says speak now, check the yes box. Hand your comment back to commission staff and I'll get it. And then, um, announce your name here. Just have you come up to the table, sit down, I'll swear you in and get your comment. For people online, it's a little simpler. I see you there and I'll just call out your name. Uh, right now it's in alphabetical order, so I'll just call out your name when, when it's your turn. Again, I'll have you sworn in, give it, I'll have you spell your name for us because we don't have a, a version in writing yet. And then I have you give us your comment. Um, just a real one, one big ground rules because we're transcribing what you're saying. We just need silence in the room. Only one person can be speaking at a time. So, uh, this way the people will get your comment, uh, recorded accurately and the commission can get that, uh, that information from you and just want to give everyone a fair chance to give us your comment. Uh, so we all, we all need to respect that when everyone's, when anyone's giving a comment. Just have silence in the room otherwise. Um, basically that's the only thing we really need to look to or, or consider, but, um, I don't expect any problems here. So I'm going to stop the screen share for the people on Zoom and just make this screen a little bit bigger for everyone. Have everyone, have everyone checked in? All right. So we are going to start. The people who join us with on Zoom, we're here actually pretty, pretty like about an hour. Some people are waiting. So I'm going to, uh, start with a couple of Zoom people that switch over. We have three, three people checked in to speak on location. So let's start with, uh, Brian Williams. Uh, you, I think, were the first person to connect and you're also, um, alphabetically the first one on my list. So Brian, if you're there, you just need to turn your, uh, screen on and unmute your mic if you wish to make a comment today. Can you see? I can hear you. Can you get your, uh, camera up to your face, please? You can't, we can't see you right now. Maybe turn your camera around. I shouldn't be doing that. No? Okay. Well, we're gonna Okay. Well, Brian, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Let's just we'll just take your comment without the camera. So raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. So give us, so your name's Brian Williams. Is that correct? And it's B R Y A N?
Correct.
All right. Go ahead with your comment.
Yes, uh, I just want to say thank you for having me give me the opportunity to, uh, share my, my comment with the committee and everyone there today. Uh, my comment is that, uh, I, I lived in Melton most of my life. And for, for more than fifteen years, I have worked as a home care worker. I love what I do every day. I get get to have people live safely in their home, wherever it is cooking meals, having them with medication or just being there so they not alone. It is meaningful work. And I would not trade it for anything, but the truth is that the work does not pay enough to make ends meet. At seventeen six, at seventeen sixty-five an hour, I live paycheck to paycheck. I have no savings account to fall back on when things unexpected happen. This is why the rate cost of my alliance energy bill worries me. I am not I am on a payment plan of a hundred and nine dollars per month. But the boundaries keep changing because I cannot pay the complete, um, the completely my, my most reasonable bill was two hundred and thirty dollars. It's very expensive. When my bill goes up, I have to decide what to cut back on food, gas or other accessories. And all of and all of our bills are going up. I am I am a part of no proposition organization called Money Market. They helps American people keep up with rate causes and make life affordable when that was my about the position increase in my energy bill. I was I I, I, I'm going Alliance is asking to raise rate on, on us again. If the Public Service Commissioner of Wisconsin approved this increase, I could pay two hundred and fifty dollars a month. And in December, it will put me in, put me and many others in a tight spot. My bills are already high than they used to be. And many beginning is already stretched to the limit. We're making what makes it harder to swallow is knowing how much money the people at the top of the state utility company are making. I am working forty hours per week doing a job for some of the most wonderful people in the state. And still worry every month if I have enough to keep lights on. Matter Alliance Energy reported over three billion in profit in twenty twenty-four. And their CEO earns more in a single hour than I than I take home in two weeks. I do not mind paying my first share. I understand that the profit per, per, per help energy costs money. But the real question is who benefits when rates raises? It is not me and, and it's not my neighbor. I feel like the only people come out ahead are the shareholders and executive. While working peoples are left to carry the load. These rate enter, enter and enter are really concerned of I, I misspelled it, but if my bill goes up another twenty dollars a month, that twenty dollars I can not spend on groceries. That twenty dollars I cannot put torch gas so I can get to work. That is nearly two hundred and fifty dollars more a year. When I, when you are living on a tight income, those choices are painful. The commissioner has a chance to stand up for working people instead of giving other green lights to companies greed that should should ask themselves, why is this rate necessary when energy companies profit are on the rate ride? And working people's pay is on the decrease. We deserve utility service at great people can afford. I want to, I want to keep doing the work I love. But I should not have to lie awake at night worrying about whether I can afford to keep the lights on. Energy is, is not a luxury. It is necessary for all of us Energy is, is not a luxury. It is necessary for all of us of Wisconsin. It is serious about protecting its people. But it's times to put working families first and stop letting companies like Alliance squeeze every last dollar out of our hand. Thank you for letting me share my, my comments.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Brian. All right. We're going to switch then to the next comment. I can, I did figure out our technical problem here. Yeah, I gotta turn the. Okay. So we did one more person on Zoom and then we'll switch over to our people on location. Let's try Dan. See you there. You're labeled Dan's iPhone. So I just need to unmute and I can take your comment if you wish to give us a comment today. Okay, off the record. Yeah, yeah. What, what is it?
Sorry, the representatives from the line was here and asked some questions. Do we do that on our comment time?
No, you can do that before you make a comment. So if you want to address them now and you guys can go outside the room and, and you can ask questions at that point.
Okay.
Yeah. So now's the time if you want to do it. Um, yeah, I should, I'm, thank you for that, but I'm going to try to, I'm going to unmute him and ask him. So Dan, I see you there. Are you able to unmute your phone? You don't want to make a comment. Okay. I see you shaking your head. All right. So I'm actually going to turn off your screen then as well. But feel free to stay on listening in. So I know Don joined us later, so I'm going to take Nick next. Nick Clifton, you're on Zoom. Are you ready to go?
I'm ready to go.
All right. Great. All right. So let me swear again. Rich, right hand. Swear or affirm. Tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
All right. Give us your name and comment, please.
Uh, my name is Nicholas Clifton. That's N I C H O L A S. Clifton is C L I F T O N.
Uh, all right. Um, I served as a member of the U S Air Force for 20 years. I am retired. Uh, I know the value of hard work and sacrifice and what it means to serve my country and my community. I also know how hard it can be to keep up with bills as the cost of living continues to rise. As a young airman, money was tight and I had to make a lot of sacrifices to get by. Now I have a wife and two children and we're better off, but even still, it seems like the price of everything from groceries to clothes, the school supplies is going up. My family certainly feels the pinch. Uh, my wife is a teacher and I'm currently a government contractor. Uh, and I'm always concerned about getting the next project and maintaining our stream of income. Uh, the median household income in Janesville where I live is seventy-one thousand eight hundred eighty-five. So half the households here make less than that. Many of them with young children who will be impacted by such a rate hike. Uh, people in these brackets cannot afford yet another hit to their already stretched income streams. The last thing we need to worry about is how my family or my neighbors are going to keep the lights on. Uh, winter in Wisconsin is particularly tough on our wallets. We need electricity to stay warm. In the past, our bill has been as high as seven hundred a month. Uh, what's going to happen to Wisconsinites who can't keep up with the higher electricity costs? How are they going to get through the winter? I work from home, so I depend on my home electricity and internet to get my job done. Uh, Wisconsinites are already seeing our energy costs rise by more than the U S average in twenty twenty-five. Now, Alliant Energy along with, alongside two other major electricity providers in Wisconsin are doubling down and asking for even more. Really? Three of the largest energy providers in the state, Excel, Alliant and Madison Gas and Electric want to increase electric rates in Wisconsin by an average of eight point three percent in twenty twenty-six and an average of five point seven percent in twenty twenty-seven. These estimated increases will cost the average Wisconsin household up to an additional eighteen dollars a month. Uh, my energy provider, Alliant, is trying to raise my electricity rate by over eight percent next year and another five percent in twenty twenty-seven. That would bring my family's bill up to a hundred seventy per month on average. Uh, right now we pay less than a lot of families because we use solar panels. Uh, however, uh, a lot of those rebates for solar panels are, are not disappearing with the new federal administration. So that is going to be an option that disappears for people. Even still, this is, is an increase. Um, Alliant Energy serves sixteen percent of households across Wisconsin and every single one of us will be, feel the impact of this rate hike. Uh, Alliant made over three billion dollars in profits last year, which is a notable increase from twenty twenty-three. The CEO of Alliant makes over three hundred and thirty, sorry, three thousand, three hundred dollars an hour. It doesn't make any sense that a public utility company is making billions of dollars in profits and expecting Wisconsin families to pad their profits and the CEOs pay even further. Instead of boosting shareholders' profits, Alliant should focus on providing power at rates that Wisconsinites can actually afford. I moved to Wisconsin after living active duty in the air force and have raised my children here. I know they're good, hardworking people all across our state. Wisconsinites care about our communities. We look out for each other. Alliance proposed rate increase shows that they are disconnected from the reality of real Wisconsin families, a reality that my neighbors and I live every day. Their proposed hike shows that they are not concerned with how the increase will impact everyday people. The Wisconsin Public Services Commission can block the rate increase and keep energy costs affordable for Wisconsin families. As a veteran, I am tuned into programs like Heat for Heroes, which provides energy assistance to Wisconsin veterans. In twenty twenty-three, they provided assistance to twelve thousand nine hundred fifty-five veterans. But in twenty twenty-four, as a result of massive funding cuts, they were only able to assist six thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine veterans. Veterans only make up a small percentage of the population, but they give us an insight into how tough things are for regular people. If you raise the rates, you're going to squeeze the people struggling from both sides. In addition, with these funds being taken from Wisconsin families, they will be forced to make cuts in other areas such as food, which will create a ripple effect. And services such as food banks will see higher participation as a result. The WPSC has an obligation to look out for hardworking Wisconsin families. It is their job to make sure our state has reliable power at an affordable price. Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much. Okay. We're going to switch back to the hearing room and we will, um, take some people who are on site here. I'm gonna turn your video off, Nick. There we go. Thanks. Okay. So let's start with Brittany Keys. I'm up here.
Given these.
We're off the record. Yeah. Okay.
Well, I, I just haven't had the, the question answer thing. So I want to do that right. What I ask them, because I do have questions regarding the impacts of the rate increase, given the segment that was done and it's applying to this. And so do I ask Alliant to step outside the room to talk about it or?
Yeah. If someone can address the settlement questions that Brittany has, um, just have you discuss that outside. And if staff wants to chime in there, that would be good too.
Because it's relevant to my.
So what we'll do is I'll continue to take a comment. Well, if, um, but we can go into recess if you guys need more time to talk. Uh, and then come back and get your comment.
Yeah, the context of the timing and everything.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah. So, um, Yusuf Adama, did you want to speak now?
Howdy.
Hi. So swear again, raise your right hand.
That's okay.
As long as it doesn't ring. Do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yep.
All right. So give us your name and comment.
Uh, Yusuf Adama. As a city councillor and I'm representing myself, but it's relevant. And I'll try to keep a nice, good scope, but all this is, it makes sense.
Okay.
Um, but as speaking on so I, and someone that tries to make themselves accessible, I talk to a lot of people and I'm twenty-nine right now. Um, renting, trying to like find my way and all that good stuff. And that is, you know, the way it goes. Um, I also have a husky. I love that dog very much, which is like my responsibility, but it complicates, uh, the temperatures that I have to keep in my house. Um, it was ninety degrees consistently for like most of the last, uh, few months. And my energy bills during that time were like over four hundred dollars. Um, I actually had my energy cut off for the first time as an adult. Not even because I didn't pay it, but because when I paid it, it was pending. I got it turned on like two hours later, but that was like, I didn't know why a guy was coming to the side of my house. I didn't know what was going on. My power was just gone and, um, it sucked and it messed up my whole work day and some more. Uh, if we look at high energy burden, being in like the six percents, I would need to be making like well over like three thousand dollars a month, um, to be at that level. And sometimes I do, um. But if we were looking at like a good, uh, energy burn rate of like two percent, I would need to make more like twenty thousand dollars a month for that to be, um, within that. Uh, we also know now that heat deaths are eclipsing cold deaths. Um, even though we have a moratorium for the winter months, we don't have any type of like shut off protections for the summer months. Uh, and we also know that Beloit, which is where I live, has incredibly high rates like asthma and all these other things that create a financial burden. Um, that can be directly traced to practices that Alliant has to methane gas infrastructure and they're doubling down on that methane gas infrastructure too. Which will further exacerbate those problems and further lead to like more financial disparities. Uh, I think as a company that is, um, you know, distributing a resource that's essential for people that we don't really have a way to live without right now. Uh, that it should be taken into account what the effects are to communities and that the, um, affordability and accessibility of this resource should be at the front of the line. Uh, so you know, a raise of sixteen percent or even ten percent is going to be, could be fifty, sixty dollars extra a month. And that's not, you know, the end of the world, but sometimes it is, sometimes it is, sometimes fifty dollars does make or break. Uh, whether I can get a car part right away or I have to drive without something that's like essential to drive or, uh, whether or not I can get my cat's food, uh, when they need it or whether I can get myself food when I need it. Um, my whole life kind of goes, I, you know, help people all the time. I work with a lot of people. The most stressful part of my life oftentimes is paying my energy bill. Uh, and Alliant has made, you know, multiple times over in profit what its expenses are. It's a company that will be profitable forever just off of the nature of people need energy. And I think that, uh, we should be encouraging them to make way smarter, sounder and more like energy justice focused, uh, decisions when they come to rates. So thank you.
All right. Excellent. Thanks. Uh, we have, uh, Lordsdorf, uh, Mitchell Lordsdorf. That's, uh, last name first. Okay. Okay. Yes. But I'll just give you some advice, uh, read slowly because people when you're reading, they tend to go fast. She's going to type up what you're saying. So she's, she's trying to follow you along. So I have to say it. I'll swear it. So just, just we'll, and we'll catch you if you're going too fast. I'll let you know.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me swear again. Swear or affirm. Tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
All right. Give us your name and comment.
My name is Mitchell Lawersdorf. I'm from Beloit. And I want to start by saying that if you hear me breathing shallow, it's because I have asthma. I've lived in Beloit my whole life and Beloit has objectively poor air quality and I won't directly blame Alliant because I don't want to open myself up to lawsuits. But anyone hearing me is allowed to make their own inferences. Uh, Alliant does not need more money. F and the monopoly, which Alliant objectively is, since it shares an umbrella with the other energy companies in the area, F, you're even allowed to use those, uh, other companies, which isn't in every area. And they still ask for more money from the city and its residents while making three times its running costs. It needs new leadership to properly allocate funds and to stop paying its CEO more than seven million dollars a year. Maybe instead of passing prices to its customers, it should pass it to, pass it to its leadership. That's how the military runs. Maybe that's how we should start running private companies. Times are tough. The people do not need higher energy costs on top of rapidly inflating grocery bills and rent pressing, rent prices. People rely on electricity to live and without an alternative, people are going to have to figure out ways of avoiding extraneous use. When, for example, my family and I are already down through just my grandfather's dialysis, dialysis machine and, uh, heat during the winter and our fridge currently being the only things running. A CEO making over seven million dollars, and I've seen sources as saying as much as twelve million, asking even more from its customers during a horrible economic time is outrageous, especially when there's little, little or typically no alternatives available. And it's also unpatriotic. In my opinion, with how terribly this country is going, as I honestly think that Alliance should be happy with what it has. Right now it's protected because of how ignorant and propagandized America is. But if they keep getting greedy, that won't be enough to stop people from realizing that public needs should be nationalized. Stop being greedy before the American public wakes up. And there is no better way to wake up Americans than make it impossible for them to afford their daily Starbucks. Alliance should realize they are lucky so far that the general public isn't aware of meetings like this or are too busy to care. But if they keep it up, they will become public enemy number one. And to my fellow Americans, I want to remind everyone that the war of independence was far over tea prices. Now we're fighting over the right to live basically because people die from not having electricity. I will share with Alliant the advice the boomers gave my generation. Maybe you should learn to go without your avocado toast. As times get rougher, we must all do our part to help our fellow American and nothing makes a country weaker than the rich hoarding wealth. Just ask Rome.
Thanks very much. Let's switch to, uh, Don Ferber on Zoom. I see you there. Great. Let me just adjust the screen. Perfect. All right. All right. I'm going to swear again. Raise your right hand. Swear or affirm. Tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
All right. State and spell your name for us, please.
Don Ferber, D O N F E R B E R. Uh, I appreciate this opportunity to provide testimony on the Alliant rate case today. As you've already eloquently heard from several speakers, the cost of the utility bills are already unaffordable and Alliant is proposing rather significant rate increases. When for residential, they'll go up sixteen percent in the next couple of years and for gas over ten percent. You know, I live in Madison and I know we're having a lot of problems here with the cost of housing. And that's true elsewhere. I mean, even in the rural areas, which Alliance serves a lot of those. We have especially family farmers who are struggling to get by and have significant utility bills in the first place. This is going to really impact a lot of people. And the question is if this is fair? Well, Alliant Energy last year made nearly seven hundred million dollars in profits. I looked up that the CEO made nearly seven million dollars alone last year in total compensation. And the chair of the board made over six million dollars, which was one of the highest returns in the country. These are really high rates of pay when utility customers are suffering. And it's them who you, Alliant is supposed to be serving first. Not this management of the corporation or the shareholders. And Alliant is not only making a high rate of return right now, they're asking for that to be increased at a time when the rate of return is higher than it is for utilities on average across the country. And there has been a utility, excuse me, a former utility executive in California who's done analysis and suggested that for investors to be willing to invest in utilities, given how secure the rate of return is, they should be getting more like a six percent return would still encourage investors to invest um, in, in those companies. His name is Mark Ellis, by the way, and there was a report done uh, about that by Dan Guerino of, I think, utility, I can't remember, Utility Dive or anyhow. The point is that, you know, utility customers are paying much more than they can afford while the investors and CEOs are making much more than needed. Um, and that these rates of return are just way too high. I mean, there has been some overruns on costs in some projects, but they're also running gas plants that are expensive to operate rather than having put in clean energy, which is cheaper. They're continuing to run a costly Columbia coal power plant, which really needs to be shut down, is overdue on that. Um, and now they're continuing to ask for more profits, which I think is just totally unwarranted. I do recall that there are proposing some things which are good to support low income customers, uh, provide an EV pilot and, you know, try to get people to use, uh, time of use. But like for the big users, a lot of them just simply, I don't suspect can do. But like for the big users, a lot of them just simply, I don't suspect can do very much of that in terms of time shifting. So in order to have some fairness, I think rather than having a higher rate of return, their rate of return should be lowered, including the rate increases that they are requesting. They are simply too high. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Don. All right, we're going to take Brittany Keys next. All set. Swear again. Do you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Clear.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, my name is uh Dr. Brittany Keys, B R I T T A N Y, Keys, K E Y D S. Um, I want to thank the Public Service Commission staff for the opportunity to speak today. Um, I am here as a mother of two young children, resident of Beloit, Wisconsin, rate payer of Alliant. Um, I am the Clean Air Policy Manager with Healthy Climate Wisconsin. I also have the opportunity to serve as the Climate Justice Chair with the NAACP Wisconsin State Conference, and I serve as the convener with the State Line Clean Air Coalition, given the undue burden of industrial um air pollution in Rock County and the poor public health metrics that we um are suffering with. Um, I am here to oppose the uh rate increase put forth by Alliant. Um, and I ask that the Public Service Commission deny the rate increase until there's a true uh payment protection program for residents throughout um their rate payer service area. Um, the Public Service Commission has previously recommended their colleagues in their monopoly utility space to uh pursue a PIP or percentage of an income payment program. And I ask that the Public Service Commission deny any increase of utility rates until a PIP-type program is adopted across the board and at a percent of income that does not drive individuals into poverty. I also ask that the Public Service Commission not approve any additional rate increases until they create and uphold an energy system where we're not paying for our own demise. This is an issue of public health, and it is an issue of life and death. And I know this because I have met with Public Service Commission staff, and I know that they know this. As the NAACP State Conference Environmental Justice Chair, we have asked them, with in the face of the ever-expanding fossil fuel projects and increasing rates, we have told them, because of these decisions, people die, and how many more people are going to need to die before we rein this in? I'm going to tell just two quick um stories. Uh, one is an individual that has worked hard their entire life. Um, uh, contributed to their community um and has seen some health um health concerns uh that got a helicopter ride that had for in-hospital cardiac arrest. That is a miracle to be alive. That is more vulnerable um to extreme heat. They also live in an area where Alliant provides their energy. On the days where it was uh heat advisory, where they'd be more susceptible, um, they chose to keep their air off. This puts them at extreme vulnerability to health complications or potentially death. And why? Because they are on a fixed income, and they didn't want to pay any more to their electric utility. They have to choose between medications and food and keeping their home. And that individual is my father. Also want to say that we are paying for the continued expansion of fossil fuel projects. Oh, despite living in a community that is undermonitored by the DNR, an air permit does not mean anything is safe. Despite the DNR continuing to permit expansion of fossil fuel projects in Rock County, we um, we have a very large problem of air pollution. In twenty twenty-four, we were identified as the most polluted regional city in the Midwest because of air monitoring that concerned citizens led. And this is why we have the State Line Clean Air Coalition, because we are advocating for a future where we all have clean air to breathe, because we currently don't. Not only does the pollution from the current plant that we are paying for and which these rate increases will continue to come because they keep asking to build out more, and they will continue to come to recoup these costs and profits for their shareholders. These, this air pollution is driving health harms as well as the acceleration of climate change. Again, this is personal. My daughter went on a regular day out for a bike ride with my husband a summer evening where it was just humid. Um, it wasn't overly hot. She wanted to go farther and hit her record. She comes back in and she's feeling lightheaded. When I feel her, she is warm because, and uh I appreciate, she's experiencing heat illness. So I have to pack her in ice packs to cool her down and then get her into a cool shower. That episode makes her more vulnerable to illness, and she becomes sick before she goes to school. And because she's more vulnerable, given her exposure to air pollution, she is now requiring an inhaler when she gets respiratory uh a respiratory infection. So I share these stories, not because it's easy, it's because we're more than a number. And I would really hope that the Public Service Commission staff and commissioners really appreciate that, one, when people come up here, it is not easy to share these stories. It is vulnerable, and it's making us relive the trauma. And two, commissioners have previously said that we overexaggerate the harms of these polluting gas plants. I'd like to say that that is completely out of line, and they have no right to tell us how we are to respond to our own illness and demise as a consequence of these these projects that they have the opportunity to protect us from. And so again, I ask the Public Service Commission to uphold its mission and its name and to protect us, the public, from the these predatory monopoly utilities. Yes, they just came to an agreement, but people are dying now because of the decisions, because of rate uh shut-offs, uh, because they're not able to afford their energy bills, because they're more vulnerable to the extreme heat, and because they keep investing in more expensive infrastructure for their energy generation. And if if Alliant is allowed to continue on this trajectory of increasing our rates, and if the Public Service Commission approves this, then I call on Governor Evers and the policymakers to change the system and the trajectory of where we're going, or at least the name of this regulatory regulatory system. Change it from public to the Utility Service Commission, because that is who is currently being served right now. We are not being protected. So again, I ask that the PSC upholds their name and their mission and deny this rate increase and to protect the public. Thank you.
Thank you. So JP Cavy is, oh, actually Patty was first. Patty's iPhone is another person we can take. Uh, if you do want to make a comment, please unmute and turn on your video. Any response from Patty? No. How about PJPCavy? PJ, are you there? I can unmute your phone if you have any trouble with that. PJ, can you hear me? No, no response from PJ. Try Patty, too. No, I can't do Patty's phone. Okay. So while we're waiting, so we still, oh, there we go. Patty, you're unmuted. Did you want to make a comment?
No, thank you. I just would like to second everything that your former speaker, Brittany, indicated.
Okay, thanks. Well, we'll just count that as your non-comment. Thanks. Uh, who else? Um, PJ. Did you? Oh, they dis- no, they didn't disconnect. All right. Well, well, while we're letting PJ uh unmute, if they do want to make a comment, let me just review. Um, let me ask if anyone in the room wishes to speak that hasn't had a chance. No, nobody here? Okay, so at this point, I don't have anyone else I can uh I can take a comment from, uh, but I will um share on the screen our notice hearing. Maybe. And while I'm doing that, let's just review that we can accept public comments in writing still up until the eighteenth of September. So you'll see the notice does indicate uh September eleventh, but we've changed that to September eighteenth. And uh they can be filed through the uh public comment webpage or by mail, and the details on how to do that are on our notice of hearing. Um, also, um, we'll be back here today in Madison and on Zoom uh at six PM to take new comments from new people. Uh, but at this point, we have everything we can do at this time, so we'll adjourn until six. Thanks very much, everyone, and we'll see you then.